I call the meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Wednesday, December 26th, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Trish Petzou, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask the clerk to take the roll, Alderwoman Kelly is participating by phone, and under the terms of the state law that allows her to do that, she needs to explain why she can't attend, if she can hear us, and who she is with, if anyone.
Yes, I am unable to attend because I'm out of town. I am alone, and there was one other question.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, very good. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gitch. Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Willshire.
Here.
We have 12 members present.
Okay, also, this evening, we have with us Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bennett. Does the mayor wish to draw? Wow, excuse me. Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton, my apologies. Would the mayor care to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Well, first of all, it is the holiday season. Happy New Year to everyone. I did wear my red tie in the hopes of getting even close to Alderman O'Brien, the tie he wore last time, but he now held out, so I guess now I'm the front of the parade. But, to get down to more serious matters, before you is my veto of R-18066. I'm going to bring some new information to your attention, tell you that this is a really, that is an actually serious matter, which can have implications across city government. And I'm going to ask you to consider either sustaining the veto or at least tabling it so you can consider and think about what I'm about to bring to your attention. Now, what this is part of is a effort that goes back almost 20 years across all of the civilian parts of Nashua's workforce to reduce very significant costs in terms of sick leave buyouts that occur at the time of retirement. And this effort has been applied with respect to City Hall employees, teachers, civilians in the fire department, and in the police force. It does not, it has never been applied to the uniformed officers. Often, they're treated differently. They have a different pension system. They have a different set of risks in their jobs, and different, really, employment criteria. But what the, this ordinance addresses, and I will get into the broader picture in a moment, is that 1817, going on 18 years ago now, in order to reduce payout costs for sick time, the city instituted a new policy which said that instead of being paid 100% on 720 hours, or 90 days of unused sick time upon departure from city employment, that would be changed to 20% of your entire accrual. So if, so, if you accrued 1,000 hours, it would now become 200 hours, not 720. And that was done to reduce costs. The same thing has happened in the teaching force. In the, although city government moves slowly, and some of this takes years to accomplish, but in the, in the teach, around the time of 2010, 11, 12, there was great public outcry about the payouts which were occurring and being paid to members of our teaching force, our teachers, upon retirement for unused sick time. And at that time, what the teacher's contract says, said, was that you could be paid for 100 days. Now, a teacher is paid on 184-day teaching year. So 100 days was approximately 55% of a teacher's annual salary. So for a teacher making $60,000, this 180 days, and we're just talking ballpark figures, would have been about $33,000. But there was such a significant outcry that that number was changed in the first step to a maximum of 40% in the 2013 contract. So for a teacher who was making $60,000, the payout went from approximately $33,000 to approximately $24,000. Now, this was applied with complete retroactivity. No one was grandfathered. Teachers that were there 30, 40 years were subject to the new rule. And that's the way it was. Then, in the next step, in the contract of 2016, payouts were reduced further. In that contract, there was some level of grandfathering, but it went retroactive for 20 years. So any teacher who had worked for less than 20 years now was taken from 40% of payroll to 30. So now, for, and that went back, not six years, but 20 years. Now, for a teacher that makes $60,000, that payout was reduced first from 33, then to 24, now to about 18. For teachers that had only been working for 10 years, it was not reduced to 30%, it was reduced to 20% of payroll. So going back 10 years, retroactively, teachers that were, again, with 10 years or less seniority, they now were down to 20%. So for that portion of the teaching force, we've been gone from 33 to 24 to $18,000 to $12,000 maximum payout for unused sick time. That's 900 employees. And it's done because there was, because the school department was straining under the effort of paying for all this, and, at least initially, before the initial contract, the 13 contract, there was a big public outcry about the expense of all this. The move was consistent with what was done back in City Hall, in the, in the, in the case we're looking at, back in 2001. But it wasn't just the teachers, and it wasn't just City Hall, it was also in the police department. In the, for the civilian workforce, in the 2003 contract, the payout was reduced from the 720 hours to the same system that was enacted in City Hall, which, which was 20% of the entire accrual. Now, there was no grandfathering, there was grandfathering in that case. In the teachers, there was none. And that, in this case, anybody that started working after 2003 was limited to 20%. And that's what they're limited to now. So all of this was done to reduce costs, because if we're thinking about the entire workforce, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars across 900 teachers, civilians, and all these different places. It, we're talking a lot of money over time. And the effort was, you know, it's just too much to be paying out all the sick, this sick time, this unused sick time. Now, for the 11 employees that we are considering, even under current, even under the new system, they will be entitled to an estimated $190,000. Now, that's not small, small change, just for unused sick time. If you pass this ordinance as amended, that number will go to 366,000. But I'm suggesting to you that we're not just talking about $175,000, which I think, and I've been telling, saying for months, is an unwise expenditure. But what I'm bringing to your attention now is that this is across the entire workforce, and you will be opening the door to the unwinding of assist, of, of, of an effort that has existed for about 18 years to try to reduce costs. Because other requests are going to come to you. Other groups are going to come and say, hey, look, you did it for them, now what about for us? And you're probably sitting there thinking, well, come on, he's, you know, this, he's blowing smoke, he's exaggerating, it's not going to happen. Except, it is already on your doorstep, right here. On your, on your agenda is a new contract for the civilian employees in the police department. Guess what's in that contract? A rollback of the change that was made in 2003. In 2003, the contract said, going forward, it's 20%. The new contract, as proposed, goes back to 720 hours. So if you think that by approving for one group, you're done, you're not. It's going to come, and if you think like, tonight, if you approve this, it's all over, it's not. Because it's going to come back to you in another contract. And if you, and the argument will undoubtedly be made, that we did it for one group, it's unfair not to do it for another group. And once that happens, how have you not opened the barn door? How about the 900 teachers, who said, they did, we did it retroactively for 40 years? You're now giving it to other people? Why, why shouldn't we get it back too? So I think you are taking a step, or you're threatening to, or you might if you override this veto, that has much broader and much more larger financial implications than you have realized to this point. I think, in my opinion, it would be financially responsible, irresponsible to roll back this almost 20-year effort to reduce city costs for the payout of unused sick time. And I'm asking you now to either sustain the veto, or at least table this. Because if you doubt anything that I've said, if you doubt anything about what these contracts say, if you doubt what, what, what the teachers have done, if you doubt what's in this contract that's going to, that's on your agenda right now, take the time to consider all this. Because you've heard that, because one employee in the fire department, who is a uniformed officer, and this has not really been applied to uniformed officers, except in that limited case, this one, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the command staff of the fire department, this one employee got what the other uniformed sworn officers get, that we should open it to this 11. And then you're going to get an argument, because we opened it to this 11, we should do it to the other civilians. And you're ultimately going to face the argument, because we did it for all the civilians, we should do it for the teachers. And ultimately, this literally could cost millions of dollars. So I think you should take some time to think about all this, and at least table it. Now, I know that's pretty heavy for the holidays, so let me give you a couple of lighter issues There's the mayor's winter reading challenge, which I wanted to inform you about. It's December, what we've done is we've asked children, 1 to 5, grades 1 to 5, to do reading over the winter. There's a website. It's in conjunction with the library, the community center. MBK and others are encouraging young kids to go on, and they record what they read, and they get prizes for reading a lot, or for writing, they can write book reports, and somebody will judge what the best book reports are, so they can get some prizes. Over, over 125 kids have already signed up, the idea being that if we can teach more, encourage more kids to read, they will do better in school. And so I think that's a good thing that's going on. And there is a, an event tomorrow, Stories and Snacks, at 1 PM at the community center. I think it's being put on by the library. So that's a good thing that's going on. And on a sadder note, I'd like to mention that John Stansfield passed away. John is the father of Trish Stansfield, or, excuse me, the husband of Trish. Trish is a retired teacher who's been very involved with tutoring over at the community center, done, doing an extremely good job over there. He's also the father of Jill Stansfield, who works here in City Hall. He was a really good guy. He died an early death, and I just, his, his wake and funeral is tomorrow. I, you know, give my condolences to the entire Stansfield family. And with that, I conclude and just wish you all a happy 2019.
Responses to remarks of the mayor. I'll start on this side. Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to ask the mayor for clarification. Was he referring, when he said the other civilian employees, to R-1802, the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of December 11th, 2018, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches relative to veto of R-18-066.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one speaker signed up.
Good evening, everyone. Nick Dahl, 6 and 8 Rock Road. I came in with some comments, based on what I just heard from the mayor. I guess I'm going to make some changes on the fly. I'm here to speak about R-18066. I guess I'll echo the mayor and ask that you at least table this before deciding whether this veto should be overridden. I think, I think the narrative we just heard really points out the, in my mind, the problems with making benefit changes retroactively. Now, we're in a situation where, throughout the city, we have a bunch of employees being treated differently, different classes of employees. I believe this has been fixed for more than just one firefighter in the past, and other union contracts over the last few years. I know this very board did make that change for an employee this year. I would ask that, you know, you at least strongly consider tabling this and gathering more information, if, if, if you're inclined to sustain this veto. Because to me, it's just showing this group of employees that they're, they're being treated differently than others.
Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 10th, 2018, Human Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. Communication of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions. Resolution 8, oh, sorry.
It's okay. Second reading of Resolution 18-090 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $58,000 from the State or New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity 2019, Violence Against Women Act, VAWA Grant Program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion of final passage of R-18090.
Motion before us is to recommend, is for final passage of Resolution 1890. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to do a roll call.
Yeah.
My apologies. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes. And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 18-091 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $275,000 from the State or New Hampshire Department of Transportation into transit grant activity, transit capital projects.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes, I would move for final passage of R-18091. With roll call, of course.
Yes, motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 11 yeas.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 18-095 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $119,100 from the Chriskey Foundation into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, Creating a Cultural of Prevention.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion of final passage of R-18095.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 11 yeas.
Oh, we don't have it. Okay, third reading, our Resolution 18-066 as amended, relative to addressing possible inequity, inequities in the sick leave policy for certain unaffiliated employees.
Alderwoman, Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Motion to reconsider R-18-066. Motion is to reconsider.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Jettie.
Point of inquiry, what, how many votes does it take to reconsider this? And what's the procedure now, considering a vetoed?
We need a simple majority to reconsider, and we need 10 for an override.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion is, Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to comment that I understand why the board might want to reconsider, but personally, I haven't actually heard anything new or enlightening with respect to reconsideration. All we have is another example of another rollback with unionized employees being the example. And if my understanding is correct of what's on our agenda tonight, another union, and this one is specific to unaffiliated employees. So I think the speaker was correct, that we are treating employees differently. We are treating the unaffiliated employees as though anything could be done to them, and they don't really have any say. Whereas now, we're going to consider a unionized group because they're coming forward and they're represented. So I don't like that message personally. I think we vetted this resolution pretty thoroughly, and we were doing it for the reasons we should. I understand that it may be considered an unwise expenditure, and I'm glad that we're fiscally responsible. But I also have several other examples this year alone, where we've been much more risky with investment, or with taxpayer money, and haven't really flinched away from that. Whereas in this kind of situation, we're not investing in an unknown quantity, we're acknowledging existing employees who've given time and deserve the recognition, in my opinion. So I'm going to vote against reconsidering.
Attorney Bolton.
Let's, let me try and make it clear what you're doing. If there's any desire for this board to further consider this measure, following the fact that it's been vetoed by the mayor, you must vote to reconsider. If the motion to reconsider fails, it's finished, and it does not become law. If the motion to reconsider prevails, then the matter is before the board. At that point, you can do anything you want. You can amend it, you can pass it with 10 votes over the mayor's veto, you can send it to committee, you can table it. Either of the last two would allow further study. But it, it appears that there's some confusion about what the motion before you is and what its effect is.
There is, and thank you for that clarification.
So if you want to be able to further consider whether this measure, or some amended version of it, will become part of the law of this city, you should vote to reconsider. If you're satisfied with the mayor's veto, you should vote against reconsideration.
I understand, thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 11 yeas.
And that motion carries. Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to override the mayor's veto of R-18-066.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I would move to, I don't know if this is in order, but in order to get, refer it back to the committee, so that the committee can consider what the mayor has said, and or input from other sources, to reconsider this, is a motion to table and re, or is it a motion to refer it?
To refer is in order.
A motion to re-refer it to the committee, so I make that motion.
Motion is to re-fer. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I think the city overall has dug itself into a hole, and, because we have different groups getting different benefits. And, and I think that the only solution is to come up with a policy that says that this is the way it's going to be across the board. Because right now, we have different people with different benefits. And we're afraid that some of the people that have the different benefits in a contract are going to come back on us and say, what about us? Well, at least in my opinion, and perhaps the city attorney can chime in, if they have a contract, say a four-year contract, they can't do anything during that four-year contract. You know, it is what it is. So any of the contracts that are in place are in place till the end of the contract. If, if we're going to refer it back to committee, we should establish a policy that says, all contracts that come before us, everyone's going to be treated the same. Because to treat different bargaining groups and different, and especially non-affiliated with unionized with unionized contracts differently is what's causing the problems. So I, I think we need a solution that will resolve everything going forward.
Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
Yes, I, I would just agree with Alderman Dowd as it relates to union contracts and unaffiliated. Union contracts don't get to us unless a majority of the membership approves that. And I think that's very different than what happens with unaffiliated and with us setting up what we think the steps are and setting up grades and all of that for unaffiliated employees. So that, to me, is a major difference, and, you know, the teachers or members of the police union or the fire local, they, they make their decisions on, okay, we're going to accept this, or we're not going to accept this. And that is then what comes to us. But they, as a majority, approve whatever is in there. So if they approve taking a cut in their return on sick time at retirement, that's what they agreed to as a majority. And, and that's what we come into a mutual agreement about and move forward. Any of the bargaining units could come to us and say, we want to change it now, but, but this group is unaffiliated, and to me, that, that's very different, and, and I look at that differently. Because whoever's bargaining with the unions, they can just say, no, we're not, you know, we're not going to do that. And I think a number of us here have sat and done bargaining with unions around contracts, and, and you have to talk about the reality of what the city can or cannot afford. With the unaffiliated, I just see that as a very different piece in terms of deciding what goes on. So I'm, I'm Lance Alderman Dowd on that. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
A lot of ways with the amendment that we've added, we do allow some self-determination to be returned to the employees that are unaffiliated, because with the amendment, we allow them to opt out of the, the changes that were initially supported by the mayor if they have a different configuration which they feel is of benefit. And that's a configuration that may actually cost us less. So we've been talking about the most extreme possible expense model, while that's not necessarily the one that we're going to see. I also, you know, as you can tell from my previous comments, I consider the board of aldermen to have made the decision. I think, I understand that the mayor is, is standing his ground and that he believes very much in this. I kind of hope this wouldn't come to a head, maybe three ghosts would visit him on Monday, but that obviously didn't happen. They maybe got wore out. Maybe they got tired in Washington. But here we are, and as much as the new information in terms of history has come forward, it's the same argument that we've been discussing in committee, that if we do anything to help, you know, amend this, we're opening the door to everything going wrong from that point onwards. I think there's two parts of what the mayor was presenting. Part of it is the concern that this may go further, and that's our responsibility as a board. It was brought up last year and the year before with regards to the spending cap that we're aldermen, we were elected to represent people, and we can't just let things pass right through. So when we have contracts coming forward or we start to see trends, we need to vet it. We need to do our jobs, but I think we did our job with this. I think we did discuss it in committee pretty deeply. We reached an agreement, and we voted on it, so I, like I said, personally, I haven't heard anything new or, or paradigm shaking.
Further discussion on the motion to re-fer? Alderman Karen.
Thank you. When this started, this was to, what I considered, to set the record straight concerning a group of people who never should have been left out of the change. They should have been grandfathered, along with everyone else, that was non-affiliated. And I understand Alderman Dowd's comments, but we, as a board, have no control over contracts other than money. So those governing bodies, the police commission, fire, and school board, they're in charge of the contracts. They make the decision whether they're going to make those changes. We don't. And then we wonder why we have so many unions. Because some of these things are done arbitrarily across the board, and they have no recourse. We didn't have unions for secretaries and things like that before, but those came about because they were always getting what they considered the shot end of the stick. And I have to agree with Alderman Lopez. We passed this twelve to two a couple of weeks ago, and I thought that we were going to move forward. And as Alderman Lopez said, not everyone is going to take that. They're going to look at what they have for sick leave and think maybe their twenty percent is better than the maximum of seven hundred and twenty. If you, if you took the time to look at some of those employees, some had very little accumulated sick leave. So either they're very sick or they take their time, and that's fine, too. So you're not looking at three hundred thousand, and you're looking at a long time, ten to fifteen-year time span. When I think about some of the expenses we've had, and one that in particular that's moving forward, I think it's going to end up costing us more money than what we thought. But that is something we have to look at moving forward. So we can beat this to death, or we can move forward and vote one way or the other and put this to rest. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd. This is on the motion to re-fer.
Right.
Okay.
So just to make clarification, when I was talking about the union contracts, I was thinking, if we develop a policy, it's from this point forward, except for the unaffiliated, which aren't on the union contract. If, if the union contract, if the union voted to come back to us with their contract, it opens up every bit of the contract to renegotiation, and they could lose more than they gain. And as far as the sick leave, that is a cost item. So we have control of that. We can, we can, we can't make changes to the policy, but if, if it comes through and it's not what we like, or it's not in accordance with what the committee comes up with going forward for the next iteration of the contract, we turn the contract down. Goes back to the bargaining unit, and they know why it could turn down, and they either get in line or, or they don't. But so just if, if the referral vote goes around, I will vote for re-referral so we can try and get a path going forward. If the referral is turned down, I will vote to overturn the mayor's veto.
Alderman Tenza, and then Alderman Lopez.
Madam President, just a, a question for either Madam President or Alderman Dowd. These, these budget line items for the payout upon retirement, the sick leave payout, are those, those are part of the school, fire, and police budget? It doesn't come out of the general city fund?
Right. It's when they do their budgeting, they have to allocate the funds that they will have to pay out. It's part of their budgeting. Because they have to have the, the money to cover the contract that was approved.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to comment that with regards to the unaffiliated employees, who are the ones we're actually voting on, this might actually move us forward because it says in the legislation, they have twenty days to make their decision, then we will have made the decision for all of the outlying. So with regards to unaffiliated, we will have set a policy and a line in the sand. Okay, we did this, we did that, you got this, and you got that. And then, again, it comes back to us as aldermen that we can't just let contracts go by and thumbs up them all. We have to consider the ramifications, and this is a pretty good case in point that if certain, certain conditions are put in there that we think are going to open the door to a whole bunch of other issues, then we need to be aware of that.
The motion before us is to re-fer. Alderman Jettie.
I would just like to say that when, when this came before us the last time, I, I made a, a plea to go back to the, the original legislation, which was to give the people who were hired prior to two thousand and one what they had earned up until that time. The argument was that this was unfair to them because it went back retroactively six years and took away from them what they had earned up until two thousand and one. So I was in favor of correcting that inequity, that unfairness by allowing, by giving them what they had earned up until two thousand and one, but then from two thousand and one forward, they would, they would be subject to the new policy. That failed. And, and what was adopted was not only to provide these people with what they had earned as, up to two thousand and one, but to, to allow them from two thousand and one forward to accumulate up to seven hundred and twenty days of sick leave and cash that out at a hundred percent. And I understand the argument was that when they were hired, that they were offered this benefit, but I think the city has the right in two thousand and one to change that policy. They shouldn't have gone back retroactively, but from then on, but they should have given those people what they had earned up until that point in time. But now, this legislation gives them the ability to earn seven hundred and twenty hours and cash that out at a hundred percent after two thousand and one. Some of the people that are included in this group had a balance of zero of accumulated unused sick time. So, you know, they're getting, with this new legislation, they're getting a lot more than what they had earned up until that point in time. They're, they're getting, you know, the benefit of this, this new, the ability to accumulate another seven hundred and twenty hours and get that cashed out. So I, you know, I think that it would be beneficial for us to refer this back to the committee, and these, these arguments can be made. And I want to point out to the people who, who want to override the veto, you need ten votes, and there are a few absences here tonight. So you may not get the ten votes, but if you re-fer it back to the committee, you get a chance to fight another day, so to speak, and we can, you know, and consider all of these arguments.
I don't think there are any new arguments, in my opinion, Alderman Jettie. Is there further discussion on the re- motion to re-fer? Alderman Karen.
Okay, I just want to clarify Alderman Jettie's comments about the sick leave. The amendment was, we brought the amendment in to, to the personnel committee, but we got a letter from the Personnel Advisory Board saying that, that amount, those people should have never been denied their continuation of their seven hundred and twenty hours. But if you, but if you look at an employee's sick time now, if there's an employee there that has two thousand hours, and they agree that they want to go back to what it was prior to two thousand and one, they don't get any more than seven hundred and twenty hours. They don't get anything from prior to two thousand and one, whatever they had. They can only get up to seven hundred and twenty hours. Anyone who has no sick time, they have nothing. We're not giving them anything that they haven't earned. It's those people with the hours that they have accumulated now, but they can't carry any more than seven hundred and twenty hours. Now, whether they retire with seven hundred and twenty hours, that's a whole other issue because they can't keep accumulating. They have to use it, or they lose it constantly. It's a constant. So I just want you to, I, I just want you to understand that, because if you look at someone's sick time at this point in time, if they have a real, if they have over seven hundred and twenty hours, they're not going to get any more than, excuse me, seven hundred and twenty hours, period. And then they have to take some time off and, you know, in, in order to get to that max. That's the max that you can hold at any given time. It's not like vacation where you can carry X amount before you lose it, but you will lose it if it, if it's not being used because you're ill or what have you. So just so that we understand that. And I'm sorry, I think we have taken this three times. We've taken it back to the boards. We've listened to the professional group from the Personnel Advisory Board, and I think at this point, and I understand we're shot a couple of people, Alderman Jettie, but we have to make a decision, one way or another. We can't keep holding this group of people, eleven people, up any longer. So as much as I'm disappointed we're missing people, we just, we need to move on.
Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
Yes, I would just, to comment on Alderman Jettie's comment about someone having zero sick hours when this happened in two thousand and one. I don't think we can say, oh, they had zero, and now they're going to have this option, because they may have had zero because they had a serious illness, or their child was sick, or for whatever other health-related need they had. So I don't think we can say, well, we're giving someone who had nothing the opportunity to have something because we don't know the history behind that, and, and I don't really think that's for us to deal with. That's their personal information, and I don't think you can just say, oh, they abused their sick time, and they were using it to go away two days early before Christmas, or take a long weekend, or whatever. That individual may have personally or had someone in their family who had a health issue. So I don't think we can start looking and making those assumptions based on the numbers that were there. Thank you.
Motion is to re-fer. Alderman Jettie.
I just want to respond. I never said any of those things. Those assumptions are assumptions that you apparently are making, not I.
And if I may.
Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
But you pointed out one person had zero hours, and now they could accumulate. And so I think people can, I didn't say you said that. I think people listening tonight could say, oh, someone had zero hours, and now we're giving them something. And I just don't want people going down the path that we may be giving someone something. They may have zero hours because there's a legitimate reason for them to have used their health time. So I just, I'm not saying you said that. I'm saying other people may make that assumption. So I think we need to be careful.
Alderman Jettie.
So if I could just clarify, what I, what I said and what I meant was that, that I think it's unfair to have gone back six years and taken away from people what they had earned up until two thousand and one. Going, but I do think it's fair going forward, after two thousand and one, to, in exchange for giving them an unlimited amount of sick leave, which they have to earn at the rate of, I think it's thirteen days a year, but going forward, they, they, they can accumulate an unlimited amount of sick time, but when they retire, they're limited to a cash payout of only twenty percent of that. And I was just pointing out that there were some people in this group who, as of two thousand and one, had no unused sick time, and so going forward, you know, so we're not, they didn't lose anything when the policy was changed. They have the right after two thousand and one to accumulate, and, and most of them have accumulated sick leave time, which they can use. It's unlimited, but when they retire, they can only cash it out at twenty percent.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to observe that if the mayor's veto stands, that's the only way nobody gets anything. It would eliminate both the ordinance and the amendment. With the amendment that we added, the difference is that the employees who are affected can choose whether they want the current benefit reimbursement or the previous one, because some of them actually don't want a hundred percent of seven hundred and twenty. Because some of them actually don't want 100% of 720. They're using their sick leave as a potential backstop against longer-term illness. So we're still talking about whether or not we're going to re-refer it, but I just wanted to clarify that the only way, if we don't re-refer it, that all of the employees continue to live in an unjust situation, is if the mayor's veto stands.
Motion before us is to re-refer. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
We have five yays and six nays.
Okay, so the motion before us is to override. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
We have 10 yays and one nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of resolution 18-100, changing the purpose of up to $50,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the LED street lighting project to the district-wide middle schools renovation and construction project for funding engineering and architectural services.
Other sponsors: Alderman Schmidt, Alderwoman Malisi Golia, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien. And Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly. Sorry.
Yes.
There being no objection, we'll accept the first reading of our 18-100, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and schedule a public hearing for Thursday, January 17, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of resolution 18-101, amending the FY 2019 HUD Annual Action Plan by reprogramming existing funds to E for All.
Further sponsors: Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first, I'm sorry, I'll assign this to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution 18-102, approving the cost items that collected bargain agreement between the National Board of Police Commissioners and UFPO Local 645 Professional Employees of the National Police Department from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2020, and authorizing related transfers.
Further sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Laws, Alderman Schmidt. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance 18-031, increasing the purchasing threshold for finance committee approval from $10,000 to $25,000.
Other sponsors: Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Laws, Alderman Dowd, and That ordinance, 1831, will be assigned to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance 18-032, authorizing stop signs in right and left-turn-only lanes at the intersection of Pine Hill Road and Sharon Avenue.
Other sponsors: Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Malisi Golia, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign this to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 18-033, amending the land use code use matrix regarding self-storage facilities in sanitary landfills.
Other sponsors: Alderman Lopez. There being no objection, I will accept the first reading of ordinance 1833, assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National City Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, January 15, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of ordinance 18-034, designating parking on Chestnut Street for Fire Department employees.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, it'll be assigned, ordinance 1834 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. No one has signed up. Remarks by the board, I'll start on this side.
I just would like to wish the citizens a Happy New Year and the best to the city. And as we start off, the next time we'll see you is a year from now, I guess, so there you go. And I would also like to express my condolences to the Stanfield family. I have worked with Jill, a great employee, and, you know, being in infrastructure, so it is something, tough time to lose a parent, so my thoughts are with the family.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I wish everyone a happy and safe New Year as we go through the holiday season.
Alderman Lopez.
I want to express my condolences to the Stanfield family as well. As Alderman O'Brien said, it's very difficult to go through the holidays with that kind of a personal loss, so my best wishes are with them. And then I also wanted to remind everybody about basic fire safety as it gets colder. We've had a number of fires popping up. I'm sure Alderman O'Brien would agree. Just make sure that you're keeping your exits clear, your hallways uncluttered, and you're being mindful of your heat sources. If anybody out there thinks that heating their house with an open oven is a good idea, it is not.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you. She would like to send my condolences out to Jill's family, and also to wish everyone a happy and safe New Year. And I thank you for finally putting the ordinance piece of legislation to rest, and we can move forward. We don't always disagree, but sometimes we have to, and we have to make a stand and do what we feel is right, and move forward from there. And it's never anything personal. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'll keep it short. I just wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you had a happy holiday before, and we'll see you in 2019.
Thank you. Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
Yes, I would also like to give my condolences to the Stanfield family, and also the family of Lou Fanoff. Lou was an employee at Lockheed Martin and then BAE, and he was also a member of our local Elks, and he died recently. And to the new board members, your first year is up, so congratulations. And we will see you in the new year, and best wishes to everyone for a Happy New Year.
Anyone else? I'd like to also send my condolences to the Stanfield family and their loss. Committee announcements. Alderwoman Malisi Golia.
Strategic planning will be January 3, 7:00 p.m., and we're in room 208. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 8:28. Thank you, everyone.